We're here today to talk about the city's consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, which is being submitted to HUD today. And let's go to the next slide. I'll note that this public hearing was originally scheduled for Monday morning. Unfortunately, the city had a citywide Zoom glitch, so we had to reschedule for today. But we're also going to be holding another public hearing, actually both in person and virtually on Friday, the 14th. And that's because we are required by HUD to provide two weeks' public notice for these hearings. And while the hearing on March 27th was properly noticed, this one was not for obvious reasons. We're still holding it because we think it's important to provide the people of St. Louis with an update regarding the city's performance prior to submission to HUD, which is due today. But again, we'll be holding another hearing on the 14th at 2:30 PM. So our agenda for today, we're going to talk a little bit about the purpose of the public hearing and citizen participation. We're going to talk about the city's entitlement programs, CDBG, Home, HOPWA, and ESG, the process by which funds are allocated, and the eligible uses of these funds. And then we're going to dig into each of these four funding categories and share out the outcomes from these programs. And then finally, and most importantly, we're going to hear from the community, any public comments. So with that, let's move on to the next slide. So HUD requires us to involve citizens at every step of our process. We're going to be talking through the process that these funds followed, and how they both begin and end with citizen participation. But to summarize for today's conversation with respect to the CAPER, it was made available for review on March 13th, 2023, on the City of St. Louis website, as well as at our offices at CDA. We published advertisements in the St. Louis American, sharing that the report was available, and sharing the hearing that was previously scheduled on the 27th. Another notice has gone out in the American, actually yesterday, noticing the public hearing, both today's public hearing, as well as the public hearing on April 14th. And again, the purpose of this hearing is to provide an overview of the 2022 accomplishments, and to provide the public an opportunity to comment. Let's move on to the next slide. So I just want to provide a general overview, as this is my first time going through this process as CDA Executive Director, of what the process looks like for these HUD funds from start to finish. And it starts with a five-year consolidated plan. And currently, we're in our 2020 to 2024 consolidated plan, which was submitted 45 days, as we submit 45 days before the beginning of the program year 2020. And that consolidated plan essentially involves a lot of data, and it sets goals. It actually identifies 39 goals that the city has as we work to deploy these funds, and even provides literal metrics for how we're going to measure whether we succeed on those goals or not. And so what we do is that we have that consolidated plan, and then each of those five years, we then submit our annual action plan, again, due 45 days before the beginning of the given program year to HUD, in which we say, here's our allocation of funds, and here's how we propose to allocate them. But in order to do so, before we submit a consolidated plan, and before we submit an annual allocation plan, we need to hold public hearings. So for example, fast forwarding, I'm going to skip the 2020 and 2021 annual action plans, and just talk today about the 2022 annual action plan, because the CAPER that we're submitting is a report that's due 90 days after the end of 2022 to HUD, telling HUD, here's how we spent all the money, and here's what we did with it. And so the 2022 action plan actually started, again, with a public hearing on July 23rd, 2021. And then after that public hearing, CDA issued our RFP, inviting the public nonprofits to apply for funding for public services, for public improvements, et cetera. After we conducted that selection process, we drafted an appropriation, which was submitted, which was passed by the Port of Alderman on October 21st, 2021. That's ordinance number 71409, and it appropriates not just CDBG funds, but the city's other three formula funds, home funds, ESG grants, and HOPWA funds. And we'll talk about those eligible uses on the next slide. So we appropriated the funds, we submitted our action plan to HUD, we entered into a grant agreement with HUD, and then after we spent 2022 spending the money, by which we enter into contracts with our sub recipients, and we ask them to file monthly fiscal and programmatic reports telling us how they're spending the money, and year-end reports, we aggregate all those reports into our consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, the CAPER, which is what we're talking about today. Next slide. So what are the eligible uses of these funds? So CDBG funds need to be spent on activities that fulfill at least one of the following three national objectives. The three national objectives are, one, benefit persons of low and moderate income, two, elimination of slums of blight, and three, urgent need. When we talk about benefit to persons of low and moderate income, that means the definition for low and moderate income is under 80% area median income, which for an individual is under $53,000 roughly, and for a family of four is under $75,000 roughly. Second, and the other way that we can meet this benefit is, one, we can require programs to conduct individual income verification, or we can also determine through analysis of census and other data that a geography is predominantly made up of over 51% low and moderate income individuals, and therefore can justify investing in programs that serve that geography and are targeted at low and moderate income individuals. Second category is elimination of slums of blight, that requires blighting study. And then urgent need is pretty discretionary, but HUD is really pretty careful and conservative about this, and limits urgent need really to special allocations of funding, like CDBGCV funds, which were intended to respond to the urgent coronavirus crisis, as well as CDBGDR disaster recovery funds. Next, and I'll flag here, because public input is important, and even though it's not the purpose of this hearing, that the city will likely be receiving an allocation of CDBG disaster recovery funds later this year in response to the July flooding that the city faced. Home funds may only be, the eligible uses for home funds is that they must be used to provide housing to benefit persons of low and moderate income. Again, that's 80% AMI, and these are totally focused on housing, no other uses. Then ESG and HOPWA funds, whereas CDBG and home funds are administered directly through CDA, ESG and HOPWA funds are administered by the Department of Human Services and the Department of Health, respectively. ESG stands for Emergency Solutions Grants, and they provide homeless persons with basic shelter and essential supportive services, as well as homelessness prevention assistance to persons at risk of losing housing. HOPWA, on the other hand, is really targeted at supporting persons living with HIV and AIDS and their families with housing. So those are the four programs that we're talking about. These are all formula grants. So the city's award, we don't, we don't exactly apply for it, although we do submit the annual action plan that needs to be approved by HUD, but we are awarded these funds on a formula basis. And that's, that formula in turn is based on qualified census tracts and other metrics. So what happened this past year, 2022? We had a total of about, because we had a special allocation of CDBGCV funds, which were appropriated in the CARES Act to respond to coronavirus, we had more funds than usual. Every other funding source here is our kind of typical annual allocation. So typically, we get about $25 billion total of CDBG, Home, ESG, and HOPWA funds. But this past year, we got a special allocation of CDBGCV funds, and we've just started spending those, as you can see, because these processes take time. And we recently went through, as you may recall, substantial amendment reallocating some of the CDBGCV funds, which we held a public hearing on a few weeks ago. HUD certainly requires us to be transparent about everything we do as we work to allocate these funds. And you can see that we spent total about $17 or $18 million of those $25 billion. And so we're going to talk about how those funds were put to work in our communities, and what those outcomes are in just a second here. Why don't we move on to the next slide? Overall, CDBG funds supported over 5,000 individuals across the city. And honestly, this is an underestimate, because it doesn't include those programs that serve a geographic basis. But you can see that the beneficiaries of these funds were disproportionately minority residents. Let's move on to the next slide. And this is a table that we're required to submit to HUD. And then you can see, if you look at, and so we're starting with CDBG. If you look at the appropriation ordinance 71409, you can see the war, the, how these funds were allocated, and you can see it broken out into even more detail. Every piece of detail in terms of every sub recipient of these funds is public and available under ordinance 71409. But you can see that we allocated $3.6 million roughly to public services. And public services is in some ways our most flexible category. But the challenge that we have is that we are cap, statutorily capped at 19%. We can't spend more than 19% of our allocation on public services, even though, as you'll see, it can be some of the most impactful funds. We're also working to update our neighborhood revitalization strategy areas, because within those geographies, we can actually exceed that cap. But unfortunately, those NRSA's are currently not in effect, because they're based on outdated data. So we need to update those, and we will for our next funding cycle, which will be in July and August 2023. We also allocated $150,000 to homeowner assistance, $2.1 million for home repair, $4 million for housing production. We'll talk about the outputs of all of this momentarily. $1.75 million for lot maintenance of LRA properties. That was a substantial increase of $700,000 over previous allocations. $750,000 towards economic development for a variety of projects, which we'll detail shortly. $1.7 million towards public facilities. $1,050,000 for rehab administration. That's essentially CDA's housing team, which currently administers, as we'll talk about, over 150 units of for sale housing in the production pipeline, and hundreds of units of rental housing. And $3.75 billion in other planning and admin funds. And those are not just CDA, those are also Planning Department, SLDC, City Councilor's Office, among others. Let's move on to the next slide and talk a little bit about public services. So we divide our public services pursuant to our consolidated plan, its goals, into a couple different categories. One big category is youth services. And you can see that with those entities listed on the slide, Herbert Hoover, Jean Slay, Girls Inc., Northside Youth Services, and Mission St. Louis, we provided over 1,600 youth with after-school, summer school, and case management services. And that was not just with CDBG funds, but also with CDBGCV funds, which were put to work for youth programming. With respect to senior services, between the St. Louis Area Agency on Aging and North Newstead Neighborhood Association, and Northside Senior Services, and City Seniors, we provided meals to meals, transit, recreation, other services to 1,500 seniors. And then with respect to food, Tommy, if you can, thank you. With food assistance, with a variety of partners, we provided food pantry services to over 1,250 city residents, and that represents actually over 5,000 visits to food pantries. But, but, but a lot of those were by the same individual. Let's move on up to the next slide, where we can talk about some more public services. We provided job training services to 570 city residents, and had over 100 successful job placements in partnership with Employment Connections, St. Patrick's Center, Urban League, Mission St. Louis. We also provided homeless services. Covenant House, Hope House, and Doorways provided transitional and permanent supportive housing to 342 residents, including 97 homeless youth. And that actually sums up to thousands and thousands of nights, because again, individuals visit the same shelter, transitional housing. Neighborhood beautification, Operation Brightside conducted over 1,900 graffiti removals, and Operation Brightside, Gateway Greening, Slaco, and North Newstead held hundreds of cleanup and beautification events, and even invested in the construction and expansion of 15 community gardens and orchards around our city. With respect to healthcare, CHIPS provided health services and screenings to 670 low to moderate income residents. Guardian Angels Settlement Association provided childcare services to 93 residents. Criminal Justice Ministries provided reentry and case management services to 91 low to moderate income residents. And Tower Growth CDC provided landlord training to 221 individuals. And something I should emphasize with all this is that, in fact, all the partners that we're talking about do much more work that we don't fund. And we're not trying to capture the entire scope of everything that they do, but just talking about the CDBG and CDA-funded components of their wonderful work. And we're lucky to have such wonderful partners. Next slide. Turning now over to housing. We have both a major and a minor home repair program. Our major home repair program is administered by Mission St. Louis, that essentially acts as a construction management firm that helps homeowners manage their contractors, and contractors manage their homeowners. We, Mission St. Louis, provided 581 major home repairs to over 150 homes, and spent roughly $2 million on those, for an average cost of a little over $10,000 per home. In addition, Harambe and Mission St. Louis administer our minor home repair program. And actually, I should clarify, Mission St. Louis administers an ARPA-funded minor home repair program. They should not be, they're wonderful partners, but this presentation is focused on HUD-funded work. So Harambe in-house worked crews, and actually, we, the 64 major home repair program services, my, the 64 minor home repair services were all provided by Harambe. That number does not include the Mission St. Louis minor home repair services, so the number's accurate. But in any case, Harambe provided 64 minor home repair services. And the building division, we partner with the building division to provide lead remediation services to 90 units. And we get those referrals from the Health Department, which in turn receives those referrals from schools, among other sources. So with respect to housing production, we had a pretty good year, certainly more than doubling the total housing production that we did in 2021, and we hope to scale even further in 2023. We had 131 affordable rental units completed. That's really primarily driven by Phase 1 of Preservation Square, which came online. And we hope that Preservation Square Phase 2A and 2B comes online next year, adding 228 affordable rental units to our, the city's housing stock. We also completed seven affordable for sale homes, as well as two market rate homes. And I'll also flag that Doorways, 50-unit new, new campus opened as well. And while we funded that, we unfortunately cannot count it in this year's report. We'll be counting it in the 2023 report, just because we wait until those units are occupied to report that up to HUD. But such an exciting project, and it was great to be able to support it. We also currently have $28 million in CDBG and home funds currently committed to projects in the development and construction pipeline, including 154 sale homes and 377 rental units. I see that that slide on the right, or that bullet on the right isn't quite complete, and my apologies, but I can tell you that that number is that the Housing Partnership provided 17 down payment assistance grants to prospective homeowners, and in fact, now actual homeowners. And those down payment assistance grants came with counseling and financial literacy services as well. Let's move on to the next slide. Economic development. We funded LRA at unprecedented levels to expand their lot maintenance and neighborhood cleanup efforts. They secured 857 properties, provided tree trimming and removal for seven, removed and trimmed, rather, 708 hazardous trees, removed trash and debris for 315 properties, demolished 192 unsafe properties, and provided lot maintenance for 22,000 properties. To be clear, the LRA as a whole has a little under 10,000 lots under their management, but that reflects visiting the same property multiple times. SLDC, under the Neighborhood Commercial District Program, completed five facade improvements that assisted 79 businesses in low to moderate income areas. Justine Peterson issued 80 microloans to help small businesses grow, and again, pair those with financial literacy and counseling services. And Launch Code completed the renovation of its new tech force center at 4811 Delmar. That's an overview of our CDBG and home-funded programs. I'll turn now to the emergency services grant, and I'll go over this at a pretty high level, as these are administered by the Department of Human Services, but happy to direct any follow-up questions to that team, and Amy Bigford in particular, who's really helpful in pulling all this information together. But essentially, it's a $1.5 million award, and those funds are allocated towards a variety of programs, including shelter programs, homelessness prevention programs, rapid rehousing programs, and data collection programs. And we'll talk about each of those a little bit. And you can see on this image on the right-hand side, the Jefferson Spaces tiny homes, which was a 50-unit development, partially funded with ESG funds, and that was recently expanded with ARPA funds, with another 50 tiny homes. Next slide, please. Thank you. So the data collection funds a agreement with the Institute for Community Alliances, which administers the Department of Human Services HMIS program. And HMIS is the program that DHS uses to track the regions, sorry, in the city's unhoused community and deploy services. It also helped fund a variety of shelter programs with AmeriCorps, Gateway 180, Peter &amp; Paul, St. Martha's Home, Hall, Covenant House Missouri, City Hope, Our Ladies Inn, Doorways, and Epworth, and in total served over 1,764 residents. Next slide, please. It also funds rapid rehousing prevention and street outreach programs. And the rapid rehousing program is a partnership with Doorways, St. Patrick's Center, and the Urban League, and helped support the rapid rehousing of 129 residents. The prevention program is partnership with Doorways and St. Patrick's Center, helped fund the prevention of nine individuals prevented from And then finally, Street Outreach 2022 was a program in which DHS reached out to over 150 households to provide services and support. Next slide, please. So overall, the emergency solutions grant helped fund over 2,000 interventions to support our unhoused community here in the city. And again, it's just a fraction of the total work that the Department of Human Service does with a diverse array of funding sources. We're just covering ESG. And here you can see an overview of the demographics of how those, of that community that was supported with emergency solutions grants. And you can see that it is disproportionately young and disproportionately male. Next slide. And this is also, go back to that slide for just a moment, just note that this is how the Department of Human Services anticipates deploying emergency solutions grants moving forward in this current program year, because again, we're reporting on what was done in 2022, but we're currently in 2023. Next slide. Next, we're going to talk briefly about the HOPWA grant, housing opportunities for persons with AIDS. And again, we'll defer most questions to the Department of Health, but discuss these at a high level. And really, the purpose of this program is to provide housing and other supportive services to low-income persons living with HIV and AIDS. And that also, those supportive services include a lot of mental health and substance abuse supportive services and interventions. And we also see, and there's been a lot of data to demonstrate this, that housing really is a prerequisite for improved mental health and health outcomes. And that's the purpose of this grant. And there's also support in terms of accessing HIV medications. The program is administered by the Department of Health, and they conduct monitoring, visiting their sub recipients. And let's move on to the next slide to talk about the two sub recipients. Actually, if we move on to the next slide, yeah, this is really important. No, we're there, Doorways and Peter &amp; Paul. This is really important, just to understand how the city deploys its HOPWA funds. We really partner with two entities, Doorways and Peter &amp; Paul Community Services, to provide these housing and supportive services. And Doorways, of course, just opened its new flagship campus. And while HOPWA funds did not fund the construction of this campus necessarily, it does fund the ongoing operations and programmatic work that Doorways does. If we go back a slide now. The HOPWA program spent $2.2 million in 2022, and it provides rental assistance for individuals with HIV and AIDS who are seeking housing, facility-based housing, short-term rental mortgages and utility assistance, supportive services, and housing information services. Next slide. I'll note that that $2.2 million is split between Doorways and Peter &amp; Paul, with Doorways spending about $1.75 billion of those funds, and Peter &amp; Paul spending about $400,000. And then the outcomes, the outputs. Over 700 low to moderate income individuals were served this past year. Over about 500 received rental assistance to prevent homelessness, another 140 received tenant-based rental assistance, and then 60 individuals received permanent supportive housing, and 23 were provided transitional short-term housing. And that's it for an overview of those four programs, and how those funds were spent over the past year. Now we'll open it up to any questions or comments from the public at large. Do we have any questions?
There are any questions, you can go ahead and put them in the chat, or if you'd like, go ahead and raise your hand, and we will unmute you. We have some city staff on from CDA. If anyone has any questions or comments, we can unmute you, or just go ahead. We have a comment from city staff saying, "Great job, team. A lot of work went into this from, not just the presenter, but lots of city staff worked really hard to make this happen."
Absolutely.
So while we're having another public hearing like this on April the 14th, are written comments still being accepted until the 14th?
We will always accept and review written comments. We won't be able to incorporate it into our CAPER, which will be submitted on March 31st. But actually, in the interest of transparency, as always, the CAPER is almost inevitably actually rejected by HUD, which finds some technical deficiency or other. It has been the past five years, and we resubmit. So yes, we'll take written comments and questions, and may incorporate them into future versions of the CAPER.
Great. We have a few members of the public. So this is the time for public comments and questions, if you'd like to write them in the chat, or go ahead and raise your hand on Zoom, and we will unmute you.
Again, we do have another public hearing Friday the 14th at 2:30, and then there's another public hearing focused on home ARP funds on Monday, the 17th at 2:00. And moving forward, these hearings will all be hybrid, both public, in-person, and virtual, because HUD's COVID-19 waiver has expired. Previously, during the pandemic, HUD waived the requirement for in-person hearings, but that waiver has expired. Previously, during the pandemic, HUD waived the requirement for in-person hearings, but that waiver has expired.
It looks like most of the members of the public have dropped off from this meeting, so I believe we don't have any public comments or questions at this time. So to the last chance.
Let's, in that case, let's wrap it up. Thank you all. Thank you to the team that worked on this. And thank you to the public that listened.